This meeting is being recorded. Thank you for joining us virtually this evening. Please know that all webinar community member participants will remain on mute during the meeting unless they have put in a request to speak during the public comment. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by 6:25 this evening via email or online form. Our first item on the agenda for tonight is our presentation by Crabtree, Roebach, and Associates. They will be giving us an update on the schematic design process.
Okay, this is John Bedea. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah. Hi, John.
Okay, hello, everyone. Dr. Messinger, you want me to just jump right in?
Yeah, I think so. John's been, we've continued to meet each week, I think two or three times this week. I'm amazed by the progress that they make each week as they go through things. But yeah, he's got an update on the process to show us where he's at and for us to ask any questions. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Messinger. Also, online is with me Scott Cousin, who has started to take the reins on the design process and the actual design. As Dr. Messinger said, we're pretty excited to show you, we've made some significant progress with the efforts of the administrative team and all the entire design team. So if you advance the next slide, please. We really have two primary topics. One is, we're anxious to share the schematic design. We now have a pretty hard line drawing, still able to evolve and change, but we've made a significant leap from some bubble diagram and conceptual sketches to a floor plan, a fairly worked out and detailed site plan, and then really a first look at the cost as we transition out of the facility study. I had shared with board members earlier, as the project moves forward and there's more information available, we'll continue to get into greater detail. And then the second item is update with the athletic facility improvements. We have a design concept and some costs to share with you in that regard as well. So if Scott is able to, I don't see Scott on the line.
I'm here.
Oh, there he is. Okay. Turn it over to Scott.
Sure. You go to the next slide. So as John mentioned, we kind of started with the evolution of this design from these, from where we're at in the study. We developed some more detailed programming with the administration to get a more refinement of the types and size and quantity of spaces and took that program. The first thing we looked at was how do we organize the building with the different adjacencies and all the classroom spaces and associated support spaces. So what you see before you is one of those concepts that we developed of how to organize the building. You'll see at the bottom of the screen, there is a red arrow with the main entrance of, of course, with any school building these days, we try to have one common central entrance for security reasons. So located at the lower side of your screen, the entrance comes onto what we call a main street or a commons area, and that's basically a main corridor to organize your circulation of the building. And then the grade levels, the two-story grade classroom wings are organized to one side, and then the, some of the support spaces, some of the spaces that are accessed by the public to the right side. But we can go into the next slide, that's a more detailed floor plan, and walk you through it a little bit more detail. So there you see that red arrow at the bottom to orient you again at the main entrance. To the right, there's, and there's a ledge off to the side there that lists what all the different colors are for the spaces that aren't labeled. But the nurse administration guidance off to the right, and then once again, that yellow big band going top to bottom on the, on the screen is that commons. And then each wing is organized off that common. So starting from the bottom left, you have first grade with, which is a two-story wing, so first and second, the next wing being third and fourth, and then fifth and sixth on the end. You can see in the top section of the commons, and then on the middle right section are some of the special classrooms, art and music. There's, and then off to the right from the, on the lower section of the screen is the kindergarten wing with some of the pre-K classrooms. And then at the end of the kindergarten wing is the district administrative offices. As we get further along, we'll figure out how those, how those spaces are carved up, but that would happen to them on a separate entrance. And then off the commons to the, to the right, go back one more slide. On the upper section, you'll see you have the, organized the gym. We have a stage that has a shared, both by the gym and the cafeterias. You have the ability to use either side for that, for the function. And then the kitchen, and then the, some of the support spaces up top. Go to the next slide. Any questions along the way, please, just feel free to ask them by the board.
Scott, let me go back one slide. I just wanted to, I just wanted to share that, I know we have sports folks here too. There were some, some reason, there was some reasoning behind this, but we actually have taken a look at turning this, the gym north and south instead of east and west, which would leave the stage here. So you can imagine it running north and south, the seating on the court facing the stage for say a coral event or something like that. But, but the seats or the stage, the stairs here would then be on the end of the court rather than in the middle the way it's currently made out. And there was some rationale behind that, these sizes there, but that's, I know that in the next, next phase, next design that you see, it will run north and south.
Right. And, and one of the main reasons was so that you have access to both sides of the court because of how you're going to have to schedule your specials with everybody, with all the grades together, all your schools together. You'll have to have two gyms running at the same time. So we'll have a divider partition in the middle of that gym, and then that allows, by rotating, allows students to access both sides of the court without having to go through another class. Right? You go to the next slide. Yeah, and Dr. Messinger, you know, things will evolve and change. This will be the floor plans, the site plan, as we get the cost, those will all be evolving and changing. This is kind of our first path. We want to get input currently from the school board as we get around to our public meetings and remember, students that will want input from the public in their elementary studies as well.
Good. I'd like to just ask a quick question. The, it looks like we've had, we have seven classrooms per grade. Have you figured as far as demographics, the capacity per, per class, what are you envisioning as far as class sizes? And do we have, would stand if we would have, you know, more population?
Correct. Great question. So the way we planned, well, the way, let's start from class size. So we basically, without any guidance on recommending class size as a, or from the administration, we use PE guidelines, just 25 students per classroom. So using those numbers, we actually have seven classrooms per grade for all grades except for, you can see there on that lower wing, we actually have what we call a flex classroom that allows you to handle any bubble that might come through there. Right now, we have it on that second story of that first wing. Then we also have the same in the kindergarten wing, we have an extra classroom. So actually, you'll have one grade level for kindergarten and one, and one flex classroom for, for those other grade levels that'll allow you to have handle flex for any bubbles that might come through. And what that gives you is a total capacity of 13,000 students. And currently, your enrollment is hovering right around there, but you're projected to be either steady or steadily declining. So when you look at your future enrollment projections, you are well within your capacity. However, we all know that things might change down the road. So as we develop our, our design, our site design, we're going to take future expansion into consideration. And of course, the easiest way to do that would be add on classrooms to the.
Yeah, I just to piggyback off of that, we actually did give Dr. Witham, and he would be studying on the population, we actually did give Dr. Witham some, some targets to shoot for, 26 of the, the upper grades, 22 of the lower grades is kind of the maximum number. Everything still falls below the seven, and in some cases, as we progress through the next couple of years, if you remember that projected decline in enrollment, in some cases, it actually dips down to six classrooms. However, having said that, each of these spaces would have the ability to go to paint the bubble if necessary. And, you know, you find you're in, you're in a case in the elementary school, if you really get the card, then there's flexibility with moving where it's support class from one wing to another and things like that. But there's a lot of flexibility here that they've given us for some bubbles if that's what occurs. But it's based right now on the enrollment projections of no more than seven. No one would need more than seven at this point. And in some cases, in a couple of years, it actually goes to six.
Thank you.
Scott, I have a quick question. Is there a rationale for stacking first and second, third and fourth, fifth and sixth rather than having first through third on the first floor? Or is it just for illustration purposes?
No, there is a rationale, actually. That's another good question. That actually, same comment came up with the, with some of the principals as they were reviewing this plan. It really deals with efficiency when you're, when you're, like you said, stacking the building, first and second grade because of their activities there, that doing there and more kind of independent learning activities and the way you organize that space, you need a little more square footage. So actually, first and second are about 900 square feet classrooms versus the other grades, which are 850. In addition, first and second also have a toilet group incorporated for those. So we could organize the building by putting first, second, and third on the first floor and vice versa, but then you'll incur some additional square footage which you might not need for those other grade classrooms.
Good answer. Thank you.
And then just to touch back on the expansion comment and enrollment, if you see kind of at the beginning of each one of those wings, there's two spaces side by side that are in that orange learning support color. Those are assortment of reading, ESL classrooms, small group instructions. But the wall in between there is, most of the walls we're doing out of concrete masonry, the wall in between those two classrooms is a drywall partition. So in the event you have maybe a little bit, like you said, maybe there's a bubble of two grades or three grades, you have the ability to convert that back into a classroom for the time being without having to do an addition if you're going to handle that short term. Okay, any other questions? So the last two spaces you'll see here, we have two STEM classrooms. That's a new special that we brought on board to handle the new rotation. And then the media center is also located on the second floor stack of administration guidelines. Okay, next slide. And then take a look at how this fits on the site, just to orient everybody, as you know, you're looking at 49.8 acre site that's facing the middle school high school complex. You can see the two blue arrows of where you enter those, enter that complex, and that led into how we enter and access the elementary school site. Go to the next slide. So to orient yourself, once again, School Drive is on the left-hand side of the screen here, Airport Road to the top side of the screen. The middle school, high school would be off the screen to the left. And there you see that red arrow on the bottom left, which designates one of the entrances to the site. That aligns with the entrance drive to the middle school, high school. And you see in white in the middle there, that's the floor plan, which we just reviewed with the red arrow at the, at the main entrance there. And you can see that we've organized the site circulation to have the bus drop off to one side of the building. We're still trying to figure out exactly how many buses we might need to stack at once, and the administration's working on how that, that will evolve, but we're showing the ability to stack as many buses you currently have. We don't think they'll all be there at once, but the ability to do that. And then off to the right is the parent drop-off with a visitor parking. So there's separation for security reasons for the, for the bus and the parent drop-off traffic. And then you'll see, if you go to the top of Airport Road, another connector. So you basically loop around the, around the whole site, and you can get service, and that would most likely be where parents would come in, and you'd be able to queue along from Airport Road all the way down to the drop-off for stacking, you know, parent drop-off at the end of the day, at the beginning of the day. There's also a service entrance to the top end of the floor plan there with another small van loop that'll be for the special education students to be picked up and dropped off at the end, and that'll be at the end of the commons. And then you'll see to the right of the floor plan there, you have a small parking area from the district administrative offices. We've designated the play area, you can see there, kind of to the right of where the gym and cafeteria would be. We're, we're still in that early conceptual phase of that. We know we're going to separate the lower grade levels from the upper grade levels, but we'll work on details of what that looks like to come up with the time. And then to the right-hand side of the site, you'll see we've incorporated two multipurpose fields that will be soccer field size, and then two ballfields in the lower section. Then in between there, as you know, that's, the site slopes from Airport Road down and through the drive-downs, you have a low point right where that darker green area is between the ballfields. That would be where we're locating store mart management. Any questions on the site?
I have a question about the parking lot that's by the play area. So this multipurpose gym area, like I know we have some, like, club teams and things that meet in our gyms, like after hours, but there be, would that parking area allow then access to that as a, as an entrance exit area to that gym area?
Good question. So if you remember back in the floor plan, and if we can go back maybe two, two slides, that central commons, how we're organizing the whole building would act as that entry, entry level. So you, everybody would be coming through that main central commons where that red arrow is, so anyone parking there would come there. And that common would act as kind of a lobby function to those spaces, like the cafeteria and, and the gymnasium, that would, that would support those after-school events. So they would come through that main, that main entrance at the front there. And then you would, that commons would, we would section off, one more slide. Yeah, we would section off each of the quarters. You can see at the end, at the beginning of each of the wings, there's a set of doors that would section off that, so that, that essentially that public space becomes that yellow bar, that yellow commons area, that's how everybody would access all of these public spaces.
Okay, so they wouldn't necessarily just be able to enter the gym, they would always have to enter the common area first?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And that's a, that's a concept really to kind of, once again, control access, control security from a security standpoint, so you don't have 10 different doors that people can go in and out. You, you know, you have that one common entrance even, not only for the third of the day, but also for the after, after school events.
Okay, thank you.
And go back to the, any other questions on the site? Yeah, I'll turn it back over to John, he's going to touch on the cost. Next slide, please.
So in connection with the advancement of the materials from the floor plan and the site plan, and some further meetings with the administrative team, the design team had contributed to a much greater level of detail of the estimate. And now you can see, for instance, the square footage is becoming rather finite because we have a pretty solid design. We feel pretty comfortable about building square footage, just under 184,000 square feet. So programmatically, that's a pretty close target from where we thought it looked like on paper, but now we're actually using the design. So we have a spreadsheet of about 55 line items that feed into this. We've also consulted with Bedea about some of the cost and categories, and so we're breaking this down into a couple of simplified categories, if you will. All of construction, estimated site cost, which now include all the play fields, and from any previous sketches that were very conceptual, you can see now all the parking, the length of roadways, the amount of paving, earthwork, and all the play fields have been now shown. And Steckbeck provided us their revised site cost estimate. Then in addition to the construction cost, we're carrying some escalation contingency factors for other categories later in the project process, like estimating contingency and inflation. So the second category are construction soft costs, permits, fees, approvals, commissioning, and inspections, as well as the third category, then you have soft costs, printing, financing, design fees and so forth, all those things that you see below, even allowances for loose equipment, furniture, as well as technology. So we have essentially a lineup for virtually every category of the project. So we're feeling comfortable that at this point, everything that the design team knows about the project, we're just under 46.5 million for the entire project. Again, all of construction, all of permitting, and all the soft costs.
Now, as I mentioned on the design, as the design will evolve over time, so will this estimate, you know, we need thing, do things like do a traffic study. Right now, we don't have any anticipated traffic improvements, but should that traffic study need widening of any roads or things like that, that you'll see that evolve in the design. Certainly, if we start to find mechanical plumbing systems, need more, we've got district these costs will, will evolve and, and change. But as John mentioned, we're, we're pretty close to a, where we feel comfortable as a budget in that 46.4 million dollar range.
I have a question going back to the class sizes. I'm from East Hanover, so our, we are kind of spoiled there, we have very small class sizes. What are most schools kind of locally in central PA shooting for when they plan for class sizes? 22 just seems a little bit high to me, but again, I'm, we're East Hanover folks, so we are generally under 22. But what is kind of the, the going average?
It, it kind of aligns with, I'd say, in the kindergarten, obviously, that's, that's usually the smaller class size, anywhere from 18 to 20, and 20 is usually just common for that. You know, when you get in the first, when you stay in the primary grade levels, when you get up to the second grade, primary being K to two, but when you get up to the second grade level, you're usually in the, in the 20, 22 range, and then anywhere above that, anywhere from, from 22 to 25. And once again, these are planning numbers. It's not to say that day one, you're going to have that many students at a class size. And actually, I think based on your current enrollment, you're probably going to be below the numbers that, that we're currently planning. I see Dr. Messinger shaking his head.
Yeah, if you think back to Dr. Witham's projections and study, when he, he would say 6.23 classes, that, that's, that means we have seven classes, but there's three quarters of the class, so 15 kids, take that out of six, six classrooms. I don't know what everybody has, no, well, Lebanon has caps at 28 for grades three through five, two through five maybe, and I believe caps it, I'm going to say 24 for K1. I can check that number for you, Dr. Messinger. I don't want to, I don't want to give you false information. I know 28 for the older grades. We had class sizes, you know, when I was in Philadelphia, we had class sizes in the older grades of 28. Very rarely went above that. Jonesstown, though, right now has 29, or would have had 29 had we not added that extra teacher. The primary grades, we hate it to go above 24, but ideally, you're between 20, and that's what I would love to have. But it does, I mean, you're probably not adding another class if it's 21 and 22, but you probably are if it's above that in kindergarten. You had your hand up, did you want to comment on High Grove? I don't know what their number is.
Yeah, I've been there seven years, and I've always been in the 18, 19 range, couple years actually 15 to 16, depending upon the year, but it's never gone near 20. So that's for second grade. The upper grades obviously might go higher than that, but they've always been kind of going towards the lower class sizes because of, you know, teacher ratios, so that's all.
Yep. Okay, I think we're going to move on then to the athletic improvements. Scott?
So we were asked to just take a look a little bit, further deep dive, and I know in the study, you, you took a look at just, yeah, Steckbeck and us do a study on your athletic needs around, around the school district. And we took a deeper dive into a couple of those needs, if you go to the next slide, specifically Field House and for the stadium, and what would that look like? So we developed a quick concept plan based on some input on, from the district on, on the program. And essentially, working our way from the lower, lower left, we're incorporating a concessions, of course, that you currently have concessions in your, your current building. The next two spaces are two toilet rooms, the code, providing the code required minimum fixtures for your current seating count. This is, this meets current code, as you know, you probably have two or three fixtures in each one of your restrooms that are well below that need. A space for equipment storage, and work way around, two team rooms. These aren't meant to replace any team rooms in the high school, these would be more just as teams need to use them for game events. Space for a trainer, space for officials, and then a ticket booth. And you'll notice that many of these spaces kind of have dual access to the right and to the left. And then if you go to the next slide, you'll kind of see how this space, this, so if you look in the middle there, that, that little blue section is that Field House. We're situating this in a way that it can be used both from the stadium and from the adjacent practice field. In a way that, so it's, it's a multi-use function, that was one of the requests from, from the administration. And then one of the other things we were asked to take a little deeper dive, look into, was a synthetic turf practice field, making your practice field synthetic turf, so you have better use of it for all, all the, all the sports that need to be served. So you can see there that Field House is, is located in between practice field, your track, your track and your stadium to serve all those amenities.
And that's, that's a little bit of a misnomer, I think, practice, we actually didn't plan on using that.
Okay, any questions on just?
Obviously, we did, Mr. Conver and I have talked a little bit. One of the things that we were discussing with the orientation of the Field House, the traffic flow, and I don't mean car traffic flow, but I mean spectator traffic flow. You know, one of the advantages to having a turf field is the ability to host playoff games, district playoff games, not just for our team, but also for, in a normal year, they're looking for neutral sites. But in order to do that, you need to have a ticket booth, and then some sort of spectator flow that allows you to cut off people from just walking up and getting. So we, we do believe we have some ideas for that, at our next meeting, but actually, we'll talk through that. But we wanted to make sure that we get the most, have the ability to have the most usage out of these, the Field House and then the turf field possible, so that we can, one, help, I think, communities, that with a lot of cases, and like, used soccer teams that are still playing, there's a lot of pockets there, and so they don't have a place to be. But then two, that competitive aspect for field hockey for soccer, both boys and girls, was a nice advantage to having that still.
Dr. Messinger, you said that that synthetic field would be used for competition. Are we anticipating that for all sports? Are we keeping the football field as a grass? What's the plan?
We would anticipate putting lines on for football, however, it typically would play football games still on the natural grass surface, which we like, the natural grass which we like the natural grass surface for that. But if it's a sloppy day and we have a JV game or a middle school game or even youth teams, to move it to the turf field would be an option rather than tearing up our nice grass field down there.
And I guess part of my question was, what would that require in terms of constructing stands for fans on that synthetic field?
Yeah, I was talking actually with Director Urban earlier about that. They have, and I just saw this in Palmyra where they put a set of, essentially a set of home stands and a set of away stands. They're on the same side of the field. If you think, if you've ever seen more Dolphins, they have a very similar setup where they have to stand on one side. But the two areas that people could sit in. We would need to add some seating there. And I think you probably want two, two set bleachers. Not certainly as big as what we have in the football field, but big enough that you can have a district playoff game and see people comfortably. Any other questions on the, once again, this is even more preliminary than the elementary school plans. Kind of just the first pass at what this might look like.
Yeah, I have a question. I've noticed over the course of the last couple of years that the water quality down around the concession stand, the bathrooms, it's a little, it has like a little bit of a rust color. I don't know if you guys had a chance to dig a little deeper into that issue. I'm just curious if you guys found that issue or have you not even got a chance to take a look at that yet?
We are not that far along with that in that process yet, but that's certainly something we'll take into consideration. And I believe this is public, this is a public utility water, oh, I'm sorry, is this served off a well?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's possible too that our engineering team is familiar with that more than we are. But we'll look into that and report on it at next meeting.
I know that we've mentioned it to Spec Beck, but I don't know that we've talked at length about it.
Right.
Looking forward to that update.
So going on to the next slide, looking at the cost. So here, as John walked you through the previous cost estimate for the elementary school, this is a similar format. You see the Field House is about a shy of 6,000 square feet in its current configuration. You'll notice that the building construction cost is significantly higher when you're dealing with a building that's primarily plumbing fixtures and food service equipment for the concession and lockers and things like that. It's a smaller building. On top of that, it's higher cost per foot. You see some associated site construction costs from any improvements from the surrounding building. And then we have a separate line item for the synthetic turf field. So that is just right now to bring that, just convert that field from grass over to synthetic turf. And then as we talk, get further down the line, have more conversations about what this wants to become and fencing and feeding and bleachers and maybe lights and things like that. We'll get to all that. But that's right now, just looking at bringing it and changing it from grass to turf. Then you can see your accoutrement of contingency and soft costs to get right around just shy of 3.3 million dollars for the Field House and synthetic turf. One other thing we're not showing here, but it was previously reviewed with the board during the study phase. And I believe a PDF was distributed to everybody was the study that Spec Beck did with all the rest of the athletic improvements that are needed on the campus there. So that's something that you'll have to think in conjunction with items we presented here to make a decision on what items, you know, obviously makes much sense with the economy of scale to do things all at once in a larger project versus just spend a little time. So you'll have to think about what other things you want to kind of try off that.
Dr. Messinger, anything you want to add on those other improvements?
No, it's a very, very difficult thing. I think some of the things we would not want to do or not look into because we would be using the facility. But in other words, we're not going to add new bleachers to the field hockey field. If we're going to put a turf field in, where field hockey would be playing their competition. So things like that. But it's a pretty comprehensive list with, you know, a lot of good suggestions, a lot of things for us to look at for modeling maybe now, but to plan out future projects each year in the budget.
Okay, and that kind of concludes our portion of the presentation. And we had to go over, obviously, as you know, we'll be meeting with you every month and giving you updates and giving you more details as we move along and evolving the design. But are there any questions on any of the material presented at the scene? Thank you for your time. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you to the whole Crabtree team for that presentation. All right, moving on to our public comment period. Those that were wishing to deliver public comment were asked to submit that request by 6:25, but we did not have any requests for public comments this evening. So we move on to item four. This is a notification, the minute shall note that public notice was given for the meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. Notices and advisements of these meetings will carry the intent that limited business may be conducted on any scheduled meeting. All right, moving on to items for discussion to be on the consent calendar. We have items 5.1 through 5.3. Dr. Messinger, did you wish to say anything about those?
I have to start to think of heads, little heads, like the past, the past, it's hard to just put on the button.
Any questions on those? All right, then we will move on to items six and seven, that is budget and finance and buildings and grounds.
Yeah, there are no items in two of those for this one.
Oh, okay. Item eight, extracurricular.
Just a note that the post-gradual step is going to postpone for a year. Hopefully, things are different the year. But it will be going this March, hoping in March of 2025.
Any question on that item? All right, and then we do have curriculum items for extension.
Yes, it says, either file adoption, we brought in the past month, the policies are listed there. A lot of those have some Title IX things that are added. And I want to thank those faculty here who've been getting a lot of industry to participate in that, I think, itself. Also have the final adoption of the anatomy of the adult curve. There's the physical annual articulation, the double ballet, the nurse. Also, I'm kind of the pro of district emergency operations plan. Thank you, Mr. Reese joining us tonight because we're on Monday to discuss the class. Would you like to give us an update, Mr. Reese, on the EOP?
I'd be happy to. I'd just like to state that the EOP that we're currently operating under the basic plan was designed in 2012. And since that time, we know that a lot of improvement has come to emergency planning. And therefore, SPO Colwell started a process of reviewing and rewriting the plan in its entirety. Typically, what we would do is review and update sections of the plan, but it was thought to be the best move to update it. Under that umbrella, he solicited and successfully obtained grant funding for us to use a consultant in writing our plan. And the consultant that we were able to identify, he, I believe, was presented to the board at one of our, one of our meetings last year. Actually was involved in writing PMS' guide to writing emergency plans for school. So it comes very, very highly qualified. Then, as you know, SPO Colwell left and now we have SPO Lawver, and he's taken the reins and assembled a review committee involving stakeholders and reviewing parts of the plan and making sure that it makes sense for our school community. It was written for our school community, but we want to make sure that it can make sense for our school community. To that end, I'll make note that there's one section in your current document tonight that will be updated before you vote next week. And it has to do with the way we call lockdowns. The plan in its current version, the draft version that's uploaded, shows, I believe, eight different types of lockdowns. And through the review process, it was established that that was too many. And so SPO Lawver has his committee working on it. I believe he has it down to four terms that he's comfortable with and the group is comfortable with. And we should have that revision in the document for your vote next week. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. And most of Mr. Reese and SPO Lawver, they've done a fantastic, feedbacking up of Mr. Colwell's story. But they've done a great job and I appreciate them going out to get feedback on the staff there too to make sure that you run it by some folks and get some input there. That's a great job by them. In addition to that, the health and safety plan, there were two revisions. I highlighted those in the plan for you that, you know, one is about hand sanitizing stations for playground equipment for elementary kids. With a focus on the hand sanitizing rather than spraying down monkey bars, there seems to be an emphasis on that as opposed to necessarily the spray. And so want to make sure we add that to that plan. And the second one we had there was, I had it and just escaped, told you guys what it was. They better remember what the second one was. Oh, I know what it was. Getting approved procedures for indoor facilities from youth organizations. As you know, without our schools, we have really no facilities for youth organizations to practice the different things. And there's just nowhere for them to go, no community center or anything like that. So we want to continue to allow youth to do things. We need to open up our school facilities, but it's important for them to be turning in approved plans then for us to make sure that they're following the same guidelines. Or if they are more strict, then that's fine too, but make sure that we're, they're at least following the same guidelines that we follow. So those are the two changes to that. Number six would be the school teachers for London Baptist College. We have two of those joining us in the spring.
Any further questions in those items? We'll move on to our final item, which is training.
Yeah, we'll have some professional subjects to bring. We also have a couple of class supplies for you. Several D plus, I don't know what it's called. We have one resignation, a careful distance, a washing down, pressure of the vest. Both with next step in her life. And then we also have a few employments pending completion and reemployment requirements there. A redesignation of Mrs. Hossler, the secretary of credit court management, and then Dale Sensen, who's at PCA.
Are there any questions on those items? So that completes what is on our agenda. Is there anything else that would have been ordered this evening? I would like to announce that the board met for a workshop session on October 21st to discuss more vision and plan. And I'll remind everyone that we do meet next week on Tuesday, November 10th for our voting board meeting. And I'll remind everyone that we haven't done so already to remember taking out our vote. And if there's nothing else for this evening, then I will be leaving in a jerry. Have a good evening and stay safe, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.